Thank you for the day that you laid before us, Lord. We ask you that we honor you in this day. And we ask you to be with us, lead, guide, and direct us as we bring on county business. And, Lord, we have a few people that are missing and that are sick. Lord, we would ask you to be with them, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All in the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Okay. Presentation and discussion of Department head committee and court reports. Yes.
We really did like the fact that the youth center is part of the NFL. Now they're providing some equipment. That would be interesting, huh?
That is cool. Any further discussion? We don't have any previous court minutes, so we won't do that today. Inter precinct project scheduling stepping. What else is going on?
I'm gonna finish up your group today.
Good luck. If that works out, get all your rock hogs. Get all your rock hogs.
Yes.
That's good news, too. There was a hesitation on that one, huh?
There was a hesitation. There was a lot of sweating over the weekend, too. A few phone calls, but it happened.
It worked out. Good. Anything further? All right. Water damage at the annex. Discuss and consider damage to annex from water leak and possible replacement flowing throughout. Have we heard back from insurance?
No, he emailed me yesterday and said we should be getting something from, if we get the invoice for the remediation, to send it to him. But that's the only thing. He hasn't sent anything else from down about their, what they're gonna cover or not.
Okay. All right. Y'all received some information from the JP. You wanna discuss that, or do you wanna wait until we get the report back from the insurance?
Yeah. I'd like to. Like to wait.
Okay.
Who did the remediation? Do you know? Who was the?
Triple A?
Triple A?
Yes.
Okay. Have y'all received the invoice yet from them for that?
No, ma'am, not yet.
Okay. As soon as we get that, I'll need that, so I can get that sent back to Shay.
My next question, do we need a meeting next week? Or does the next one all be until the third of September?
Let me look into my calendar.
Didn't know if we had any bills that we could pay.
Well, I'm by myself this week, so no. I'm doing all this stuff, and then I've got state reports that I gotta get submitted. So there won't be any bills put in the first month, this 27th.
Okay.
I just say the third.
Okay.
We'll have it for that.
All right. We will table that until the next meeting. All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. So there's been some changes since then. This is what we've found. Angela found some things that has made some changes. Do you wanna talk to?
Okay. So we got our insurance increase, whatever. It was less than what we had anticipated. We had budgeted at a 5% increase. It was a 2.5%. So we went back through and redid all the meeting. And when I went through on mine, I had people in there that, I still had them as family or with children and stuff like that. And when I got the report from Misty, who has that, a lot of them have employee only now and stuff like that. So the cost came down about. And then there was one department that I had, the department head or the person who worked in the department, went to be the department head, and so we had the salaries still in there for his old position at that higher rate. And so that rate lowered. It came down a total of $413,463. So it brought down the total budget.
So what we're looking at is instead of a .5615 tax rate, .5498 tax rate, which would bring in $19,383,532?
Point one.
.5498. So we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing at 10:06. Any comments or discussion?
What are your tax rates as far as the proposed? You're saying 5498?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The tax rates, the proposed is 5498?
The proposed was the .5615. The tax rate we're looking at setting today is .5498. Yes, ma'am.
And what is, what was the non-revenue rate again?
.574.
And the VAR?
.5796.
Any further discussion? Any questions, any talks? Okay. So on the board, or on the board, I'm going back to high school, a long time ago. On the screen is a breakdown of what .5498 or $549.80 per hundred thousand pays for. And it breaks everything out. I took several things out of the general fund to show, and that's gonna be your quality of life bills there and the emergency reserves. Like the health unit, the senior center, the youth center, golf courses separate, library, extension service, welfare, and the election administrator. What per hundred thousand at .5498 a person pays per year for each of these services? For example, for the EMS, it's $5563 a year per hundred thousand. Senior center's $18.54 per year. As you can see, there's, that's the breakdown of what they cost each taxpayer per hundred thousand at that tax rate. And I'm gonna post this on our website. And then there's a pie chart. I might said that'll all be on the website as well. Okay. Any more discussion on, in the public hearings? The tax rate? Okay. We will close the public hearing at 10:09 a.m. All right, court take possible vote to adopt the 2025 Skerrit County budget after making any changes and take a record vote. Are there any changes that the court would like to make in the budget? In any lights? Okay. I entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
Judge, I make a motion that the Skerrit County tax, Skerrit County ratify.
That one's gonna be number 13, I'm sorry. We're, we'll adopt the budget.
Oh. I make a motion that we adopt the 2025 Skerrit County budget and approve the order adopting the tax rate for the tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025, and levy taxes and take a record vote.
All in favor? Take possible action to approve order adopting the tax rate for tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025, and levy taxes and take record vote. Now, tell them.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Make motion that Skerrit County ratify the property tax rate as shown in the proposed budget.
Yeah, go ahead and do the.
A second. I'll go ahead and do the bottom two.
Okay, says record vote. Which one do you want to do?
Is that correct, Angela? We'll go ahead.
You don't have to ratify anymore. The new tax laws took that out. So it just needs to be the budget and then the last two where you do the INS separate from the MNO.
Okay.
And then the total, the bottom two sections of that page.
So one and two are irrelevant.
One and two are irrelevant, then. Skip one and two.
That's two. I don't have copy anymore. Do you want my copies?
Make a motion to adopt the 2025 budget.
That one you've already done.
Right.
Because that was the budget.
Motion to approve the order adopting the debt.
That one, you gotta do three and four.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the order adopting the debt INS tax rate at .0278.
Okay. And then the.
You wanna do the record vote like it says, or you don't have to?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's second. They change this up every year.
Yes, and they have changed it a lot this year.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the order in adopting the 2024 maintenance and operations MNO property tax rate of .522, which is effectively an 8.13% increase in the MNO tax rate. The MNO tax rate will be effective, effectively be raised by 6% on a $100,000 home and will raise taxes from MNO on a $100,000 home by approximately $42.
Go ahead and read that last red part.
Making the total 2024 tax rate .5498.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Accepting donations to county entities. We have senior center and youth center. The senior center has $1,674, $330, and then an additional $1,666.50. And the youth center has received donations in the amount of $300.
And I make a motion, we accept the donations of the county entities and the senior center and the youth center.
All in favor? All right, statement of agreement with West Texas Centers. It's the same agreement we've done three years. Money hadn't changed. They do have a new chief executive officer.
Do you happen to have the contact info from what's on there? Okay. Because we have not been able to have any correspondence with that office. I'm supposed to send them the monthly budget analysis. I just, I don't have anything. Jeremy asked me the other day about ordering ink or paper or something for the copier. Now, I haven't heard anything from anybody at MHR MR since Kristin Madrebo's there. And that's been a few years already.
Okay. I will give that to you. Any thoughts, questions on this agreement with West Texas Centers?
Make a motion, would you approve the agreement with West Texas Centers?
Second. All in favor? All right, move on to November general election, order of election. Can you tell us about that? November election is something we have to do every time?
Yes, every year.
Okay. Every time we have an election.
Well, that's ordered by, as our county said.
Yeah. And that'll list tax assessor, treasurer, attorney, precinct one, precinct three, district clerk, sheriff, and JP one. And none of those are contested.
Correct.
I make the motion, have we approved the order of election?
Okay.
All in favor? Okay. New course guides for Skerrit County Golf Course. Did you wanna talk to that, Phil, or is it something you wanna just?
It's unnecessary, no.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and discuss golf carts for Gateway Tournament. Discuss and consider waiving of golf cart fees for Gateway Tournament. I'll let you talk to that one.
This was something, this Gateway Tournament is Gateway Family Services Tournament. I guess every year it's been held. Last year, it was brought to my attention that a private individual paid for the golf courts, golf carts, and $45 a pop per tournament. And times 12, you do the math, 540 bucks. Anyway, so the organizers of this particular tournament came to me after telling me that, saying, hey, would the county be willing to donate? I said, that's, that's something strictly for the court to decide. So now that's in front of you. Certainly a worthwhile cause on one hand. On the other hand, you set a precedent by this. It's course losing revenue.
Did we discuss this, something similar to this, one time before? I didn't find it in the agenda, in the minutes or anywhere, but.
Have you talked to Mike about this? Because I don't know the statute about counties being able to allow to donate services to. I mean, I know that it is a nonprofit organization. I do know that. So that may be, but I just, I don't know the statute that everyone said.
We weren't, we didn't used to be able to. There had to be a reason. And just an example, a church here wanted millions. So a, that was not something that could be done legally. And so a person that went to the church gave the county material out of their flitchy pit, more so that was worth more than what the millions were, and putting the millions down. And that's how it got done legally. Now, that may have changed since then, and that's been a while.
There's an AG opinion letter that says, Article 3, Section 52, the text of the Constitution prohibits a county commissioner's court from making outright gifts or donations of any sort per section 381-001-F, including a donation of county tax funds thereof to a nonprofit organization whose purpose is to assist. And then it goes on, so.
Is it a donation if it's waiving fees?
It would be considered a donation, yes. Yes. But you could still table it and talk to Mike and see. Because I, I mean, I just did a quick cursory on it. I don't know the, I don't know for sure about that.
The term is this Saturday.
I'm asking, we'll leave it for now and come back to it if the answer's. All right. Personnel policy, changes personnel policy regarding coronavirus. Our old policy states that, and with this was put in place when coronavirus came out in 2020, states that the full-time employee would get, be paid up to 80 hours or two scheduled work weeks. Of course, CDC has changed since then. What we're requesting is to follow along with the flu policy, which states that you can get up to five days off as long as you have a doctor's note, doesn't go against their sick. Is there anything you wanted to add to this, Misty?
No. I mean, it's just good to have in our policy. So it doesn't, I mean, they can't help if they do get sick from the flu or whatever, but it kinda just combines it all into one mass thing. Makes it easier for them, but they have to have the doctor's note.
And as we've found, coronavirus is still around. It's gonna stay around, seems like, and spreads quickly, as we've seen.
Did you say five days?
Up to five days, that's, yes, sir. That's what the flu policy states as well.
Where am I missing it at?
They don't, they don't say it down here.
That's, that's what you're wanting to change it to, but I don't see it five days. Let me see.
So they're not saying it's.
They may want to.
They said we'll be paid up to scheduled work weeks.
Okay.
Yes. Well, it's five a day or weeks. Because like your guys, a road and bridge works 10 hours. Instead of doing the eight hours, they would get their whole day.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Five or 12.
Yes. So you'll get, yes, you'll get what your actual hourly time.
I'm just gonna send, spend five days.
Or seven, eight hours.
Fourteen hours. I've just scheduled.
Judge, I make a motion, we approve the new coronavirus, coronavirus policy change.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Move on to approval of treasurer's monthly report for July.
Do I have any questions?
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's monthly report for July.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Approval of the monthly personnel report.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's monthly personnel report.
All in favor? Certified revenue, approval of county auditors, July 2024 monthly financial report, which is down online.
Make a motion, we approve the county auditor's view of 2024.
I'm gonna make a quick note on that. That, for public purposes, that financial report is made available by, usually by the 15th of the month, but we have to wait for department heads and elected officials to turn in all their reports before we can do our final report and get it on to the website. But it will be ready by the regular session of every month for the court, just for public knowledge.
Well, thank you. Yes, ma'am. All right. So we have a motion?
Yes.
There's a, all in favor? All right. Move that second, sir. And approval line item transfers and budget amendments.
Okay. There are, hmm, it's just, I have only two. I thought there was more than two.
She took three, there's three. Three and a half.
My papers is missing. Okay. There is the golf course, part-time salary, $5,000 into part-time salary, $5,000 out of utilities. This is, it just leaves them just a little, a little over $4,000 in their utility line. This is then EMS communications, $1,022.79 out of equipment from $1,000 to $5,000 to cover expenses for handheld radios. And then the other one is the youth center, sports supplies, $2,000 out of program expense. And she said they have more players on at football than they had anticipated. And then do you want to go ahead and do the budget amendment? This is JP one, auto expense, $15,000 that, that line every year. We don't have a clue really how much to budget, because you cannot predict how many autopsies they're gonna have to have. And if they get the full, hey, don't try to see you there. Sorry. The full thing or just the, the smaller one that doesn't cost us as much. But there's been a lot of unattended lately. The last couple of years, there's been a lot of unattended.
Make a motion to approve a lot of transfers and budget amendments.
Second. All in favor? Let's pay this.
$282,167.38. Maybe the smallest one, I don't know.
All in favor?
On that deal about the donations, there is a, when you go into it further, it does say that they are, you can, if the entity that you're providing the donation or whatever serves a public purpose and they do serve a public purpose, they serve.
Serve our community.
Yes.
That's the answer I got as well. Thank you. So we'll go back to that item. If you believe it does serve a public purpose, I personally think it does. And you want to waive the fees for the carts for the Gateway Tournament, I would say if we did it, it would only be for that type of tournament. One that is not making a profit, but it's to give money to or for the donation. They're donating to Gateway. It's Gateway's fundraiser.
Judge, I make a motion since Gateway does serve a public purpose that we waive the cart fees.
Hang on.
For the, uh-oh.
Hold on. More. He said, we must make those findings. He doesn't think it fits.
Uh-oh.
So.
He doesn't think Gateway fits?
No.
Because it's a batted women's shooter. And they are a 501(c)(3). They're a United Way organization. Or is he talking about because it's a golf cart, it's for golf?
Property.
Instead of actually, so.
Because I'm arguing with him.
All right. So the county attorney says it doesn't fit. I believe, I'm gonna go with what the county attorney says.
I believe.
I agree. Okay.
Sorry. Maybe a good governor.
And I apologize for not checking on that before I asked, but I had a couple of things going on since then. Attorney, yes, ma'am?
I have a question before you adjourn. So you took a vote on the 2025 Skerrit County budget. Is that the proposed budget?
It's the official budget.
Official budget. So at what point was there ever a proposed budget presented to the public?
It was in the county clerk's office on, what date did you think it was?
On the 6th.
August 6th. It was filed in the county clerk's office for public inspection.
And what, and what date will the official budget be on the website? Lori?
That would be up to the county clerk's office. We'll adjourn here today.
It has to get all those signatures on it today and then...
Okay. We will be adjourned?
She is not here. I will try and get that done.